Really happy to have as many of the new council members as we almost could have. Victoria Parks cannot be with us because she's going someplace by air. So that was a very good excuse for her that she's getting on an airplane. But we just experienced a very unusual and important council election. And probably more candidates ran for council than has ever run before. And we had eight open seats, people who had never been really elected. We had three appointed people running, but we had eight seats that were to be filled by people who had never been elected. Greg Landsman was the only previously elected council member. So this was really an open and very busy council election. In fact, we chickened out at the Community Issues Forum. But there were so many candidates, we didn't see how we could deal with them all. So we're trying to make up for that by meeting with the newly elected council members today. And we'll keep this pretty informal. What we had in mind was not me really giving an introduction to you all, but having you say a few words about who you are and why you ran and what are the issues that you see before us? What are the critical issues that the new council, starting in the new year, will be wrestling with and important to you all? And we're going to let Mika Owens go first because of her previous engagement, that she said she could make herself available early on in the forum. So, Mika, do you want to take off from here?
Awesome.
By the way, I'm Bill Woods with Cathedral Outreach. And welcome to the Community Issues Forum. And we'll be restarting again in January of the new year. But we thought this was a good way to introduce some of the new council members here. So, Mika, I'll let you say a few words about yourself and some of the issues that you're concerned about.
Yeah, well, William, thank you so much for having me. Thank you for hosting this forum. It's always wonderful when people can come together. They're engaged and interested in what's happening in their local government. So I'm excited to be here. My name is Mika Owens. And for those of you that I've not met along the way, I do see some familiar faces and names. But I am a resident of Cincinnati's North Avondale neighborhood where I grew up, born and raised, raised in a household that taught me how to work hard, union household, entrepreneurs as parents, so learning those values along the way. I've always been involved in community and organizations. Civically, I decided to organize in 2016, which was a lightbulb moment for me. It was also a moment that allowed me to think about what is my own personal input into democracy moving forward. And so decided to work in local government. And so I decided to join the administration of APTAP Piraval and the Clerk of Courts, where we've done really great things there, governing with good values. So living as a single mom, raising a son in the city, I have a certain perspective on how people are able to matriculate and navigate through the city, being a small business owner, being someone raising a family and understanding the needs of housing. You know, I've been on CMHA's waiting list at some point in my life. And so I understand those things, transportation, all of that. And so coming to a place where knowing, as Bill pointed out, just how high the stakes were in this election, of how many seats were open and what the critical issues are for our city, housing being at the top of the list. And so I decided to get in this race to help to move Cincinnati forward in a way that is around equity and justice and prioritizing disparities and inequities that we see in our communities. And so I'm really excited to think about the solutions that can come of folks who are truly invested in making sure that we are helping to improve the lives of residents in this city. Housing is definitely at the top of the list. As a small business owner in my life, I think about the economy and how we revitalize that as we are still dealing with this pandemic. I mean, if anyone has walked downtown on any given day of the week, it is not the same downtown as we knew it pre-pandemic. And so thinking how we support small businesses and innovate and create access for people to continue to be inspired to be entrepreneurs in this city. I think about the investments that we can make in young people moving forward and what that means in terms of safety and health, community and economy. Because I think about moving people into skill building and allowing them to be sustainable adults. And so that means getting them ready for the jobs of the future. Underlying all of these things is also the environment. And so I think this is a city council where all of us are really aligned on what the issues are. So it's really exciting to talk about these things and knowing that we're all going to work on these things together. But underlying these things is how do we make decisions and making sure that we are centering sustainability and that not being siloed. And so I see this as a really big opportunity to do that within this council. So really excited to work on the big things, really excited to work with my colleagues, who we've had relationships along the way. And so we are coming in, being aligned with professional relationships that we know we can get things done together. And so that is the exciting proposition and really honored to be able to serve Cincinnati in this way.
Well, thank you, Mika. Does anybody have a quick question for Mika? Because before she has to get out of here for another meeting. If not, Mark, Mark Jeffries, new council member, you had an appointment as well. How's your schedule?
I'm good. I actually cleared myself until one.
Okay, well, good. All right. We're going to let Scotty Johnson go next because he had joined us early on. So gets the prize for attendance, early attendance. Scotty, I know of your long career in the police force and the Sentinels, but talk a little bit about yourself and what issues concern you.
Thank you very much, Bill. Thanks. It's great to be here this afternoon. I like, as you mentioned, 33-year career with the Cincinnati Police Department, three-term president of the Sentinel Police Association. As Mika pointed out, and you'll hear from the others that are here this afternoon, we've been working collaboratively for as long as we've been running. So it's probably been close to a year process of us getting together, discussing different issues and learning each other's strengths and weaknesses. And I think that's the type of collaborative effort that will be different than any other council that has served the citizens of Cincinnati. That's no knock on any other previous councils, but this is something new that was done, running as a slate, working together as a slate. So we've had that head start to be able to be intentional on addressing specific issues. Mika pointed it out, housing and jobs. Housing and jobs are two things that really go together. When you have a working society where people are earning a living wage and people are able to live, where they're comfortable, that goes a long way in our society. So we will be strategic. We will be laser focused on housing. We'll be laser focused on jobs. And we'll be laser focused on making sure that the needle of injustice is moved in the city of Cincinnati. I've said this before, Cincinnati should only pay second fiddle only to Chicago, the second city. We should be that city in the Midwest where we outpace Indianapolis and outpace Nashville. And I think this council, this group of people that have been elected, have the intestinal fortitude and the drive to make sure Cincinnati is mentioned right after that second city, Chicago. But great to be here this afternoon.
Well, good to have you, Councilman elect Johnson. And why don't we let Mark Jeffries go next?
Yeah, excellent. Love following Scotty. So, and I do like Chicago. I went to the University of Chicago, so I love Chicago. It's a great city. But yeah, so first of all, thank you for the forum. Thank you for the opportunity. I'll share a little bit about me. And then I will build on Scotty's point. I mean, I do think, I'll jump right to it. I do think we have had the benefit of working together as a group. But the other thing I would say is it's an incredibly diverse slate in every possible way. Right? We have different neighborhoods, east, west, north. We have different backgrounds. Scotty is a former police officer, Mika in community organizing, Jeff is a labor attorney myself in business. I think that diversity of outlooks is something that is really unique. So I'll share a little bit more about that. So yeah, a little bit about me. I am not a native Cinsinatian. Again, a separate, like me and Reggie, Reggie and I, brother, are transplants here. I've been here for 20 years. I grew up in New York. So my father's an immigrant, came here without a dime in his pocket, grew up working hard on food stamps. First job was cleaning toilets as a janitor. And fortunately, I had a lot of opportunity, had great teachers in public schools. I also had a unique job to give me the opportunity to go to college and work my way through college. So I view things with that lens as well. I did go on to business school and then P&amp;G for 17 years. And then the last four years as an entrepreneur. And I do live in Clifton. My wife's a pediatrician on the West Side, so I consider myself an honorary West Sider. I did grow up on the West Side of Manhattan, so I do kind of jokingly mention that to West Siders. It's a little different than the West Side of Cincinnati. But, and we have four kids, two are in college. They both went to Clark, Montessori, and two were at Walmart. So I do come from a different perspective, both from my lived experience, but also my current one. I have served on the Clifton Town Meeting, running all of our transportation and pedestrian safety issues and parks issues. I've served also in the Park Foundation. I started a nonprofit, Go Live. And so that's a little bit about me, which kind of emphasizes a little bit the issues that are important to me. Like Scotty and Mika, I share affordable housing, jobs, those. I also have significant passions for pedestrian safety. I do think that is a major issue in the city. That we have a seven-year-old girl on Avondale getting killed, a pregnant woman in Redding Road getting killed, a jogger in Northside getting hit. So this is happening systemically and we need a paradigm shift in how we approach that issue, which I'll be happy to talk more. The other couple of issues that are important to me are environment, like Mika, converting to electric. Because what we have, why are issues like that important? We have the 11th worst air in the country, 11th worst. What does that mean? That we have four times higher asthma rates, especially among children. And that's typically among communities of color too. So 17% of kids have asthma. That's because our air quality is so horrible. That is tied, all of these issues are connected. That is tied to disparities. It's tied to the quality of our air, et cetera. And then the last one that I would share is how we are growing as a region and as an economy. I am very concerned that, as we all know, we have one of the highest poverty rates in the country. At the same time, the chamber says the three quarters of new jobs in the next three to four years are going to be below self-sufficiency. We're not going to grow out of there with good paying jobs. We need a plan for how do we both grow entrepreneurship, especially among African Americans? But then also, how do we bring in the types of jobs and grow the types of jobs, green jobs, that we really need to make this place a destination for companies looking to invest and go grow good paying jobs? So that's a little bit about me. Happy to answer questions and turn it over to whoever is next. So thank you again.
Maybe we'll save the questions to all of our council members that introduced themselves. We've got our Christ Church Cathedral member and just elected member, but she was appointed Jan Michelle Lemon Kearney with us. And we have Jeff Kramer Ding. Jeff, do you want to tell us a little bit about your background and the issues that concern you?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Bill. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And well, again, because I think it's important, second, the comments of my colleagues. Yesterday, we were at a council orientation put on by the administration. And I think that they were maybe surprised by how this group of incoming council members really enjoys each other's company and respects each other. And it's just going to be a great group to work with. So I hope and believe the administration felt a very good positive vibe coming from this group of council members as we begin to work for the betterment of the city. I was introduced earlier today as somebody that's been tangentially involved with City Hall his entire life. And I thought about that and thought that that's probably an apt description. I was an aide to council member Todd Portune. And I'll date myself, back in the late 90s. I was the executive director of the Charter Committee from 2001 to 2006, where I learned so much from Bobby Stern and Vice Mayor Marion Spencer and so many great Cinsinatians. And then I've been involved with my neighborhood Price Cell my entire life. Very proud of my work in Price Cell and was a co-founder with many other good people of Price Cell. Well, and very proud of the work that that organization has done. That's my background. I have had the privilege of working with many people in the forum, a lot of great and wise people. My passion is certainly the city budget. My colleagues are tired of me talking about it. But our budget situation is very serious. We've got $400 million in deferred maintenance. Deferred maintenance doesn't sound bad, but it's maintenance that has to happen and should have happened, but it's not. Our budget is structurally imbalanced. We've used various budgetary techniques, we'll say, to sort of gloss over the imbalance, but it's very real. And the pension fund is also in dire straits, won't impact all of our retirees. There's just a recent memo coming from the Retirement System Board of Trustees that said immediate action is required, period. We didn't solve these, we did not create these problems. These problems were largely created by cuts in state and local government, but we're here to solve them. And it's going to take a lot of difficult decisions. But I'm excited to work with this great team to do it.
Thank you, Jeff. Jeff and I worked together with the Charter Committee when you were there. So it's good that you continued this work so hard. I'm going to turn to, she's no stranger to the community forum, but she's a first-time elected. She was appointed to council in the spring or June of 2020. But Jan Michelle Lemon Kearney is newly elected. So, Jan Michelle, welcome.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate it. And hello, everybody. I'm really excited about our new group, just a fantastic group. We've been working together for quite a few months now, talking about issues that are important to us. And you've already heard that list, which is great. And now it's time to really get the work going. So yeah, so I agree with Jeff. The orientation part one was wonderful yesterday. And it was more of us coming together and trying to figure out all the processes and making sure we're doing things correctly. And so I think we're just off to a fantastic start. Jeff mentioned the budget. The budget is going to be a big issue. You know, the earnings tax usually is about 70% of our $1.5 billion budget. And this year, I think it was about 60%. And with people working from home, from outside the city, there are a lot of challenges about whether or not we can collect that money. And so a lot of that's in court now. We don't know how it's going to come out, but we do know that we need more money. And we have a lot of projects, including capital projects, that need funding. So everybody's been talking about pulling together a SMAL-type commission. Remember the SMAL Commission from years ago? But with business leaders, community leaders, community folks, everybody together, to say, what can we do about increasing revenue for the city? So I think that's going to be a collaborative process, so look for that. And we're okay for now, thanks to Art Money. We're probably okay for next year. We've plugged in some of last year's Art Money into both budgets. And so we're not at a crisis by any means, but we want to get ahead of it so that when that Art Money runs out, we have a plan for increasing revenue for the city. The other thing, Steve Lemon, I know you have a question in the chat about affordable housing, what to do about it. And so let me just say a few things about that. I think a lot of people maybe didn't realize that the city has an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It's been around since about 2017, but just like no real money in it. And so it needs funding. Now, I think there's about $8 million in it. But the city administration is trying to get a HUD 108 loan. It's a real low-interest loan that'll put another $34 million into it. And that gives us some real money to actually work with. And all that sounds really positive, I mean, in terms of it's going to happen. We've been talking to the people at the Cincinnati Development Fund, Joe Huber and Robbie Suggs about it. And so I think this is, it's real positive. We're sure it's going to happen. And then we can start talking about what to do to increase our affordable housing stock in Cincinnati. You know, it might be, some ideas are low-interest loans to developers who want to do affordable housing. There might be some city renovations that happen. But there will be a housing advisory board that's going to bring suggestions to the city about what we can do to really, really increase affordable housing in a serious way across the city, not just have it concentrated in one area. And to make it good housing, we're not talking about junk. We're talking about really good housing that people are proud to live in and proud to call home. So Steve, I hope that, I don't know if Steve can speak. I hope that answers your question.
Very good. Good to hear from you, Michelle. And we do, I didn't think we had Reggie Harris, but Reggie Harris is with us. So it's your turn.
Yes, I logged in at 12:01, so I apologize for being a minute late.
Oh, that's my fault. I just didn't see you.
No worries. No, no, it's a pleasure to be here. I actually am out of town, so I am logging in from the state of Rhode Island. But in any case, I just wanted to say, echo all of my colleagues. I'm really excited about the work. So Reggie Harris, first-time candidate, elected to Cincinnati City Council. I'm a clinical social worker by training. I work in affordable housing development. I'm actually wrapping up my last day at the Community Builders because it is a nonprofit affordable housing developer and we receive money from the city. And so it is a conflict of interest for me to be employed by them. So my last day of employment with them is tomorrow. But one of the things I'm really excited about is this is the work that I do. I have figured out with housing authorities in other cities, Cleveland, Detroit, Akron, Columbus, Indianapolis, solutions to affordable housing. And I think the really exciting thing about Cincinnati is that we have a lot of resources. We have a lot of resources available to us in this region. And as council member Kearney sort of stated, that there are things that are in motion, which will be incredible solutions. But there's also a lot that we are able to do. And so we have a real knowledge base on council from a variety of perspectives that I think we're going to be able to think about, not just this idea of tackling affordable housing, but thinking about our housing stock, thinking about how do we increase our housing stock? How do we increase homeownership? Because an increase in homeownership is a solution to affordable housing, right? Like when we get more people who are owning their homes and less long-term renters who are on fixed incomes, but able to get them into housing that also not only addresses safety, but it also addresses our housing situation, increasing our housing supply at all income levels. It also addresses the cost of affordable housing. Very smart use of tax abatements to incentivize smaller investments in housing increases affordable housing. And so it's a conversation that's really huge. But it's also a conversation that is attached to so many issues in our city when we talk about transportation. You know, Mark and I were on a call with Councilman Keating yesterday. We talked about density and transportation. And so the more that we invest in our public transportation and our bus lines to get folks to jobs and to connect, we create density along those routes. Again, that addresses affordable housing. So you know, I feel extremely optimistic about this new council, the mayor and the administration, because there are a few things that I do want to point out that I think is really important. And this is not to discount Councilmember Keating, because I just don't know her as well. But I do know the eight other Democrats that have been elected. And what is incredible about us as a slate is that each of us can demonstrate active participation in a project that has benefited this city. Each of us have, we can talk about a moment in which we partnered with the city and community neighborhoods and brought about a need and necessity. So it is a council of doers. It is a council of folks that have been accountable to neighborhoods and to people. And so I actually think that that's something that hasn't been highlighted enough. And one of the things is actually really important. And so we are a group of people, we come in and meetings, we're like, how do we get it done? You know, we're going to pay attention to detail. We're going to make sure that it is comprehensive and that it is a good intervention. But at the end of the day, I think we're all guided by how do we get it balanced? How do we get it paid for? How to get it done? How to keep it sustainable? And that's the thing that I really respect about this. So I think if anything, it's going to be sort of narrowing our focus to say like, okay, this is how we're going to get it done. And I would just add, I think that part of the diversity of this slate and one of the perspectives that I'm really curious to bring is that we have folks who have various histories. So people have lived in Cincinnati their entire lives and they're fifth-generation Cincinnati. It's just someone like me who's a transplant, so I'm new to this city. And so I rely on my colleagues for a lot of historical knowledge, but then also from my professional and lived experience, maybe to be like, oh, like, here's a perspective that maybe hasn't been quite thought of. And so then we begin that back and forth of fleshing that out and contextualizing that and using that to move forward. So I'm happy to be here with everyone and looking forward to having some conversations. But yeah.
Well, that's very good to hear from you. And where are you linking in from?
Little Compton, Rhode Island. It is the most southern part of Rhode Island. My family, my husband's family is from the Northeast. And this is a family home that we inherited after a great uncle passed away. So I am literally in the middle of nowhere. So I am sitting on top of my Wi-Fi connection. And you ask me why I'm so close to my computers? Because I'm literally sitting on top of the Wi-Fi connection to make sure that I'm really connected.
Reggie, I think you get the prize for the furthest distance of our Zoom forum link-ins. We had Senator Sherrod Brown from Washington DC. We were kind of pleased about that. But you take the prize for furthest away. We have plenty of time for some questions. And you all have brought up some issues, like the affordable housing issue. I'm sure other people have.
There's a question in the chat.
Question in the chat.
I can jump in with that, Bill. That's Steve again, Steve Lemon, another Christ Church Cathedral member. So Steve is asking about how to put more pressure on developers to include affordable housing in new housing projects. So a big part of that is what, you know, we were talking about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that would actually incentivize developers to do more affordable housing because low-interest loans can happen through that means. And that makes it more affordable. You know, zoning and density are another thing we're talking about. There's some ideas out there about waiving density requirements. And I would like to see that. And we've been discussing this, just tying that to the inclusion of affordable housing. So it doesn't mean that developers can't apply for density waivers. That's the process that goes on now. But it does mean that if affordable housing is included in their plans, that there could be some automatic density waivers to give them the incentive to actually include affordable housing. That there could be some automatic density waivers to make, to, to, you know, give them the incentive to actually include affordable housing. And as well as, you know, some other benefits such as tax abatement. So there are things we can do to actually incentivize affordable housing. It's hard to mandate it, that would get, my understanding from our law department, when you start mandating. In Ohio, it gets tied up in court and you end up getting nowhere, so the idea is not so much to mandate it. But to incentivize it, to really encourage it so that we can really get moving.
And I would echo everything that Councilmember Kearney said and to also add that, I mean incentivizing really is the way to go. One of the things that I think is important to understand when, when we develop affordable housing, you have developers. Use tax incentives, you know, apply for federal funds and city funds. It also comes with a set of compliance issues that are really important and not all developers have the capacity to. Ad- adhere to that compliance because it is a specific skill set. And so when we think about this, we also want to make sure that when we are including portable housing, we want to think about the duration, the longevity of it. And the quality of the housing. And Cincinnati, actually, we're really fortunate in the sense that we have, we're in a space where we can do a lot of incentive to create. What we call natural occurring affordable housing and then so, again, that's thinking about how do we incentivize smaller developers, the person that is a homeowner. To purchase a duplex or fourplex in their community, maybe use some tax, get a tax abatement to then rent out those. Those units at a certain, you know, a certain rent price that is more affordable. And also ensuring that as we are building out our cities that we don't tear down housing, right? And so, you know, thinking about with any sort of highway expansion or any sort of transportation expansion, that we're not tearing down housing. Right, that we're preserving that housing and again, the real emphasis on homeownership. And then freeing up housing that is currently occupied by folks who have the ability to pay rent. I mean, out in so many communities, we have people who are on fixed incomes or maybe have a lower wage. But they have a demonstrated history of paying their rent on time for decades. We should be able for those residents who want to have a house, be able to connect them to resources, to get them into homes to free up those spaces. And so I think it's a combination of like, not only working with the developers to develop them. But then also use all of these natural resources we have in the city to create a really strong housing pipeline.
A related question that some of my friends at the Peaslee neighborhood. House have asked me to, they've been working on getting a more equitable development process in the neighborhoods. That many times the city approves development for neighborhoods, but actually. Gentrifies the neighborhood and takes some of the residents out of there, there, there. Red, they're taken out, they can't afford to live there anymore or the, the development hurts the residents that are already there. Any, any thoughts about that coming up?
I, I think that, I think that Councilmember Kearney and I think Councilmember Landsman. Were working on what we would, what hopefully is something that we can def, do a deep dive into as legacy owners. And when you talk about legacy owners, we're not sure the amount of years, let's, let's throw out twenty years. Let's say you've been living in the community for twenty years, like that there's ma, there's great development going on in Pleasant Ridge right now. And so you've been, you've owned a home in Pleasant Ridge for twenty years and as a legacy owner. They, they should be able to stay there and made, and pay the taxes that they've paid over the years. And not the new tax hike, so there were things that I, I do believe, and Jam Michelle can answer this. I think her and Greg are working on some things where legacy homeownership would be an assist. And not moving out those that have been the foundation for the neighborhoods. And those are things that this, that, that, that we have talked about looking into to make sure people aren't displaced. As Reggie talked about, when housing's already there, not the displacement of people. But keeping those that have laid the foundation in those communities in their homes. And incentivizing development, but not displacing people while we are developing.
Yeah, I can tell you that the, the Property Tax Working Group has some suggestions about that. And I think, so I, you know, I use a term like Scotty does, legacy, meaning people who live there a certain amount of time. I think they're using it to mean seniors, so you know, that's something we'll have to talk about. But yeah, the Property Tax Working Group has some suggestions that they're going to bring to us, I think in January. So all the new council members will, will hear about it. But it's, it's about anti-displacement because that's really important, you know, if you look at OTR, for example, development is wonderful and, you know, we love it. But we want to make sure that people who live there get to stay there and so OTR went from being, at least OTR South from. Being something like, you know, seventy five percent black and twenty ten and four years later, it was seventy five percent white. And folks just got displaced, I mean, they couldn't afford the rent, they couldn't afford the property taxes. And so we want to prevent that from happening, we, we don't want our neighborhoods segregated. We want people to be able to stay where they are and to have mixed income neighborhoods, you know, those are really healthier neighborhoods. Where everybody benefits from the same amenities, so, but anyway, but we're, we'll be, you'll, you'll hear more about that. That might be a really good issues forum coming up, Bill, I'll just throw that out there as an idea. Because there'll be a lot of, of good ideas about anti-displacement, how to keep people in their homes and to benefit from the developments that come to their communities.
And if I can just add, can I add to that, Jam Michelle, because I think, you know, it always comes back to the old adage, a problem well defined is a problem half solved. I think there's really two issues, right? There's the issue of legacy homeowners who are homeowners and they're also getting priced out because of, you know, property tax increases. And increase the property value, which is a double edged sword, right? It's great that you have increased value, but then you can't afford the property taxes, so that's one issue. And then the other is for people who are renters, you know, who your rent is, you know, nine hundred dollars one day and then it's two thousand the next and then you're priced out. So that second issue, the other part of it, I think, is how can you incentivize or increase opportunities for homeownership? Which I know Jam Michelle talks about a lot as well, so among people who are renters, how can you incentivize them? Through a, a, a rent to buy type of initiative that a lot of cities are implementing. So I think there's a piece of work around that as well, because the best place, the way to keep people who are renters in a neighborhood where you've been a long time. Is to have that sense of ownership and also it addresses an issue of, of institutional wealth building. The way that you build wealth in this country is through homeownership and education, right? And so the more that we can, it's not a panacea, but the more that we can incentivize and, and, and. And enable people to own their own home, there's, there's clear benefit there.
And just one quick thing to add on top of that is that, you know, so there's a, a question again about community engagement. I think part of this whole conversation is, again, and I like to be really specific around the difference between gentrification and revitalization. You know, as I define it, gentrification is developer led, it is a financial model led investment in the community. That is not, has no regard for residents' legacy spirit of the community. And then there's revitalization, revitalization is about bringing economic vitality back and economic participation in a community. And so for us, when we think about and we approach it from that way, right? When we're thinking about how do we invest into communities that have been disinvested and allow all people to participate? That then begins to shape programs and begins to shape engagement with, uh, community councils and really driving what communities need. I'm going to talk about the folks in Westwood, for example, Westwood is doing incredible work and East Westwood is also has some really strong leaders. And when you talk to the East Westwood leaders, they say a lot of things, they're like, listen, we are definitely working collaboratively. But like what we need in East Westwood is different from what we need in Westwood, like right now, we don't need a brewery. Like Westwood has, we need a community center, right? And so being able to listen to communities and as they identify, right? Uh, what they need and cities and being responsive to that is how we begin to grow communities without displacement. And grow communities so that there are supports in those communities, so that the community, that. The businesses in the communities reflect the needs of the community, right? So you'll see lots of times where there will be a, a new restaurant or a coffee shop that opens in a community. And no one who lives in the community goes to that restaurant or coffee shop, because that commercial development doesn't reflect the, the expressed desires of folks in the community. And so those are benchmarked and certainly the Peaslee rubric, which is, you know, to me, a foundational sort of model. Uh, addresses that in a very clear and specific way.
And my friends at Peaslee would be very pleased with that response, Reggie, so that's, that's good. I noticed that we've got John Schreider and we had Elizabeth Brown, who've been leaders in pushing for affordable housing. That we need in the city, John, are you still with us? Do you have any questions to pose to these folks? I don't think so. Okay, John.
Thanks for doing this forum, I, I think it is extremely exciting to hear from all the new newly elected council members. I, this is the most optimistic I've been about Cincinnati and housing and jobs in my whole career. I don't have a question, I'm just really excited to hear all these great ideas.
Well, that's good news.
We'll have to hold, hold them to it, Reg, John.
That's right.
Question that has come up, wait. Question that's come up from time to time is about police reform and Scotty. You've had a long career with the Sentinel and working with the collaborative agreement. Do you see any need for further work in that area in terms of reforming the way the police interacts with the. Neighborhoods and communities?
You know, great question, Bill, I think first and foremost policing is transitional. So we are constantly, constantly getting better. If you think about, I'll use this analogy, you think about the New England Patriots and all of their, the number of. Super Bowl rings that they walk around with right now, I'm not a big Patriot fan, but you gotta give them. You gotta give the devil his due when it comes to what they've accomplished in that organization. Cincinnati Police right now is one of the leaders in this country when it comes to police community relations and the collaborative agreement. We know it's historical when it comes to that type of relationship between the community and the police. But Cincinnati Police is happy with where they are, but we can't rest there. We gotta continue to make sure that we, that the policing, the evolution of policing keeps evolving. As the community and society changes, so when we talk about police reform. I don't see a huge need or a sweeping need in Cincinnati for police reform. I do see a need to keep pace with the changing society, the changing different demographics. And the changing of the refreshing of the collaborative agreement to where we continuously keep that partnership. Continuously keep the line of communications open so that we are not only getting together and meeting. Unfortunately, God forbid if another crisis situation were to, were to occur. But Cincinnati Police is on top of it, Cincinnati Police are engaged and they do want to keep pace. With the changing demographics and the changing society that faces policing. Difficult job, di- very difficult, it changes from minute to minute sometime. But the, the people and the, the leadership in the Cincinnati Police Department are committed to keeping pace with the collaborative. And that's one of the exciting things that is coming with the new police chief. Either he or she is going to have to be in line with what has been laid, the foundation has been laid here in Cincinnati.
Justin Jeffrey, did you have a, I think you had a question earlier that we didn't get in, Justin, are you still?
Yeah, Bill, yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for having this forum and I'm excited like John about the, the potential of this new council. And look forward to seeing what happens. I, I was asking about and, and Reggie kind of addressed the, in recent years, there's been a lack of citizen input into the process. But the question I was actually just going to put in the, the chat box is about, in the city, there's a, a lack of public restrooms. Throughout the urban core and often in the summertime, if, if you walk through our alleyways, you'll see feces and, and on many streets. It smells, it reeks of urine in the summertime and, you know, this is a, a basic human infrastructure. That cities like Portland have addressed and I just would like to encourage this council to seriously consider. Having more public restrooms, particularly in the urban core and areas around Finley Market. I know our, our daily bread has had to rent porta potties and I think we need real. Uh, more permanent solutions, for, for instance, around Government Square. You know, we have a lot of people around there and many times the restrooms at Fountain Square are closed. And so this is a, it's a quality of life issue, it's a public safety issue and a public health issue. So I just want to encourage you all to, to really look into that issue, that's all.
That's really important, thank you so much for that, we'll definitely look into that, thank you so much. Mark, I didn't mean to stop.
You're fine, so I was going to address the first part of your question, but I'll also address the second. So I mean, yeah, the, for example, the, the restroom that is down in Smale, I think is great, right? And I think that's worked well, but that's one, so I, I do think it's something we have to look at and I have, you know, I do. Think cities like Chicago and Portland and even New York, you know, have certainly addressed it. So I think that's, that's one on the radar, what I did want to talk about was your, your comment on community engagement. So I think part of it, you know, obviously there are emergencies on occasion, but a big thing, theme for me is. We have to stop being so reactive on everything, we have to be a little more strategic. It's true on pedestrian safety, why I think we need a comprehensive plan rather than whack a mole. We're dealing with somebody who got hit over here, somebody got hit over here, we're, we're reacting all the time. So I think that's a part of the issue with community engagement is I think we should have mapped out, here are the priority issues for us as a council. Here is how we're going to engage communities, here's when we're going to engage them. And so everybody is super clear on when that's going to happen, how that's going to happen. Having served as a trustee on a neighborhood council for the last three years, I've seen where it's been done really well and it's very methodical. It is very in depth and, you know, it takes a lot of work, but I've also seen when it's not developed and it's kind of checked the box. And so I do think the more intentional and strategic we can be about, here are the areas where we are going to engage with, with communities. And get out in front of those, you know, the better it will be for all. And ultimately, frankly, I think we get a better outcome and product, the more input we have, the, the better output we get, in my view.
Were questions out there or responses or?
Yeah, Bill? I just threw something in the chat fund, the chat room. I, it seems to me we need to restore the, the full two point one percent earnings tax. And if they did, if that was done, then point one could go to the Affordable Housing Fund. And as a continuing source of income, it would make that, those people come together, I think. And then the balance, it could be sunsetted if you need to, after a certain time. But we are way, we're down to, from the other major cities in terms of income. Mark Jeffries and others have talked about the fact that we're playing games to balance the budget on a regular way. And I can't think that we can depend on continuing federal funding for emergencies, the balance of budget. It's, it's just, it's time to bite the bullet and say it's important to raise taxes in order to get things done effectively.
Yeah, Ed, I'll, I'll take that and I, I, I think that that is a, a very important point and part of the conversation. That, that Vice Mayor Leck Kearney alluded to earlier, that we need to have as a city. And, and what happened was ten years ago, we lost a large chunk of our local and state government funds, which we always provided. And John Kasich said, cities and townships are going to have a very difficult conversation about replacing these funds. And in true Cincinnati fashion, we've never had that conversation. And we've done a lot of things that aren't sustainable, but the biggest thing we've done is, is take people. That were in our operating budget. Now we're in our operating budget and we've shifted them to the capital budget. And we've done it more and more every year for the last 10 years, which is lead, leads to the deferred maintenance. So we're 400 million in the hole. And again, we're going further in the hole every single day. It's getting worse and worse. So that, that discussion is way past due. The federal funds, the stimulus dollars and the transportation dollars, if we use them prudently, will buy us time. It will buy us a few years to have the difficult discussion and, and talk about the issues that, that Ed raised.
Well, good. Susan Schiller, you, you've got a question.
Yes, thank you. You know, many of you I already have met, some of you I have not met. But being the largest family shelter in Cincinnati, I'm thrilled to hear that there is going to be such an emphasis on affordable housing. But my concern is, you know, we're not going to be able to address this problem in my lifetime. Okay? And so what do we do in the interim? You know, on any given day, I'm going to have 100, 120 children just in the Bethany House Shelter. And so how do we address the kids' needs now? You know, moms need childcare, you know? We've got the low paying jobs. We've got, you know, the education issue, transportation. And so there's so many different issues, this has already been alluded to in this, this conversation. But, you know, I, I guess I would ask, you know, we need to figure out an interim plan until we can get all that affordable housing funding coming in because that's outstanding. But, you know, we've got kids now that are not eating, that are not getting to school. And, you know, we're never going to be able to address the needs of our city if we don't take care of our children.
Yeah, that's, that's a good, good question. And, you know, the, our mayor-elect Pureball was running, saying that the pandemic had exposed so many of the inequities that already existed in our society and has only increased that so. So you're, you're really reflecting on a, on a critical moment in our history, I think.
And, and then if I could jump in here, one of, one of the things that, that we, that we are going to have to do is that we're going to have to work closer as a city with the public school system to. One of the advantages we have as a slate is that we worked with that incoming school board slate with Mary Weinberg and Dr. Moffett and, and Bernard Craig, that were all elected to the school board. So we've got a working relationship there. But when you talk about children in poverty and we talk about homelessness that affect our children, those are real issues that we're going to have to tap into and we're going to have to address. Is those are real issues that continuously feed into where we are as a city. And those are issues that must be addressed with some, with some fervor. Because we can't keep saying, we can't keep believing that somewhere along the line, there's, there's just going to be this huge transition of people out of poverty. That's where the jobs come in, where people are actually earning a living wage. That's where housing comes in, where people are able to feel as though they are a part of society, where they've got a decent place to go and live. But in the interim, as you talked about, those are things that we, we gotta become aware of. There, I, I guarantee you, and like I said, this is no knock on any past councils, but I guarantee you, the, the, the reality and the numbers of homeless children are not something that we're probably, as a city, well aware of. We know it's there, but we, I guarantee you, as you alluded to, Susan, that we would be shocked at the number of homeless children, the number of children that go to school hungry every day. So those are things that I think that working relationship with the school board that we do have now will be one of the attempts and one of the, the, the things we utilize those relationships to find out exactly how severe it is.
And I would add, I appreciate what you said, Scotty. And Susan, I, I loved your question. I think a very practical thing that I think that we'll be able to model as a council is sort of the collaborative relationship. And so I, you know, my office is in Avondale, I work in Avondale, I do a lot of work. And Councilmember Kearney and I have worked on a lot of things. And, and the reality is that, I'm going to say this with a caveat, there can always be more. Our region actually is not suffering from a lack of resources. It's sometimes it's a capacity to connect people to resources. It's about folks knowing resources exist. It's about folks navigating the systems to get the resources. And sometimes it's about a duplication and sometimes triple, like, I don't know, triplication is not a word, but like a tripling of resources. And so we have this moment right now where the school board, council and the county, we are, all have these relationships where we can work very collaboratively to plug in and to get those resources that we need, right? So, you know, like, and what we, and we were doing this in Avondale. If I had a family and I had a family that had parents, I'm not going to refer them to this resource. I'm going to refer them to, to, you know, to the PRI resource, right? Like I'm going to send them straight there because that is the resource that's going to be able to serve them. And then we know when the, you know, with CPS, if there is an issue with kids getting to school, we need to think about, okay, but there is also, we had planned to do some road construction. Maybe we need to delay road construction because we know that if we start messing with this route to school, that that's going to impact kids getting to school. And this is a critical moment in time. And so to me, I heard the spirit of your point of like, what can we do now? And I think that part of what we can do now is make very clear and not muddy up the resources that are currently available and really work collaboratively, collaboratively to make sure that neighborhoods know what's going on. You know, county folks know what's going on and we have a clear accounting of all of the resources. And then when we can see that and we see the real deficits, then we can say, okay, who can, who should take the lead? Actually, maybe we need our state reps to advocate for some funding to bring more money and to plug in this hole and this is not a city issue, right? Not to skirt, but to say like, who is most poised to address this issue currently? And I think that that's a big piece that gets missing in addressing these just like basic livelihood pieces. And this is just coming from personal experience as someone who's worked in nonprofits and have just been like, just give me the money, just give me the money, just serve these hundred people. That's it. I don't care who it is and no, I'm not going to fill out another form. Just deliver the food, you know?
Any, any further insights or comments from both our council elect or our, our participants here?
No, I just want to, I do have to go, Bill. I just want to thank everyone for this opportunity. I think it's been phenomenal forum and, and look forward to future ones as well. So thank you again.
Well, I'm, I'm with John Schreider. I've, I've been very impressed with both the unity and the ideas coming from, from this group. It's, and, you know, it's not, not as if it's, issues are going to be solved overnight. But when you've got a, a team that's really committed to it, I think we, we've got, we've got a chance. So I'd like to thank our, our speakers, our new council members and thank our participants. And I think this is going to be our last forum for this year. But we'll be kicking off again in January. We're going to try to get back to some in-person forums in the coming year. Hopefully this Oberon isn't going to prevent us from going back to normal. But thanks so much and see you.